I am calling the special bimonthly meeting of the Board of Directors of Marin Municipal Water District to order. I did want to remind folks that if you have any comments on any item on the agenda, please email your comment to boardcomment@marinwater.org. Comments received prior to the Board taking any action on an agenda item will be read out loud at the meeting during the discussion, and some items will be posted on the website. Specifically for item number two tonight, with the high volume of comments we received, we provided those that came in prior to the Board meeting to the individual Board members, and we'll do so with all the subsequent comments on that item. And we'll also be posting all the items we receive on our website.
Good.
So with that, I would take a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Kohler?
Aye.
Director Quintero?
Aye.
Director Russell?
Aye.
President Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll go to public expression. Did we get any emailed comments for items not on the following agenda?
Yes, we received two Board comments for items not on the agenda. The first from Frank Mason. Well, actually, both comments are from Frank Mason, San Rafael, California. "The current rates are punitive to low water users. I purposely conserve water and only use nine CCFs on my last bill, not even close to the tier one, zero to 21 CCFs. On my current bill of $114.91, a total of $77.21 for meter charge and the fees that work out to cover 67% of my bill with only $37.71, 33% of my bill for water usage. The reason I say the razor punitive is a high water user that is in tier four is charged the same amount for their meter charge and fees, but because of their high usage, they make the system have to be improved, grown, wears out quicker, and many other things. I understand a need for a set meter charge, but it should be the 33% of my bill, not 67% of my bill, giving a true cost of water usage to all, including us, that truly are trying to help control water usage. And if anyone should be rewarded by lower rates, it is someone like me that is conserving water. I will be watching the live stream tonight. I understand that this isn't on special meeting agenda, but I feel it is important for you to address this matter at this meeting and future meetings." Second email also from Frank Mason of San Rafael, California.
Before we move on, obviously, we're not allowed, we're not supposed to be engaging on items not on the agenda, but I do take this comment very seriously. I think it is important, and I would like to ask that we agendize a study session or a workshop, something on this soon, because I think this is a really important issue that needs to be discussed with the constituents to really explain what is going on with these charges and the relationship to 218, because I think it's really important that we bring along folks that are very thoughtful about this, and they're really watching their water use, and explain what's going on and hear from them in a more thorough way than can be accomplished in a brief comment. So, thank you.
And the second one also from Frank Mason of San Rafael, California. "I got a call from Matt at Customer Service. He confirmed that my current bill, the fees and such, are 67% of my bill, and if I was a high water user with the same size meter, the fees and such could be as little as 10% of my bill, proving my point that the current water rate structure is punitive to water conservation users, which doesn't make any sense in this world." And that is all.
Okay. With that, we'll move to Directors and General Managers' announcement. Director Bragman, do you have any?
Just thank Crystal and her team for starting to do some work up there at Bon Tempe at the Disabled Fishing Pier. Really appreciate that. I think it's a great thing to do, especially now, you know, really shows where the district's heart is, and I just wanted to thank them for moving on that. And you too, Ben.
Director Kohler?
No announcements for me, thank you.
Director Russell?
No.
Director Quintero?
I have no comments.
President Gibson?
I have no announcements.
As a General Manager announcement, I wanted to share that along with the rest of Marin County, we're beginning to think about the thoughtful process of reopening, and we'll be doing that in line with the county and following their advice. So, there is a beginnings of discussion of that, and we're all, I'm sure, tracking places that are moving forward. So with that, wanted to move to the regular calendar. Item one, a motion to approve the minutes.
Move approval of the minutes?
Second.
Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Kohler?
Aye.
Director Quintero?
Aye.
Director Russell?
Aye.
President Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, moving to item two, update on e-bikes, as you'll hear in a moment from Sean Horn, who's going to be providing an update and presentation to the Board. Tonight is really the first time staff is bringing this item in front of the Board, and we do expect to have a number of meetings well before we will be bringing this item for, with a recommendation for a decision. So I did want to note that this is just the first step in a number of steps we anticipate will be going forward on this rather complex item. With that, Sean?
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Let me know if you aren't able to see it or have any issues. Does it look good for everyone? All right. So this is an update on the e-bike. The item is for discussion tonight. We hope to get some input from the Board of Directors on how to proceed forward. So for the last few months-
Actually, Sean, can you use full screen, because we're seeing the next slide as well?
Yeah.
Usually, you can spread it out.
Is that better for everyone?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry about that. So for the last few months, the district has been convening an e-bike community advisory committee, and this is in part because we've been seeing an increase in the uses of e-bikes throughout Marin County and on districts' watershed lands. There have been some questions regarding how to proceed with access relating to e-bikes, and so the update is going to provide a summary of the CAC process, as well as some approaches that staff has developed through the 2019 workshop that we held, the CAC process, and public comments received during the CAC process, and reviewing other jurisdictions' regulations relating to e-bikes. So under the state water code, the district has the authorization to enable rules and regulations to allow for recreational access and to govern the use of its facilities. The district has a long history of providing for the public access within its watershed lands consistent with its watershed stewardship mission. These consist of hiking, walking, running, equestrian use, as well as nature observing and other experiences that people seek out on the watershed. We also allow for bikes to be used on service roads. Bikes are not currently allowed on trails within the watershed, and we have restrictions around swimming in reservoirs, boating in reservoirs, as well as no pets allowed to swim in our reservoir. We do allow pets on leash though. So the district has a history of creating rules and regulations that guide how we manage the watershed lands. The district also acknowledges that the community has deep connections to the watershed lands and Mount Tam, and so recognizes the need and benefit of public access on its watershed lands. Currently, the district regulates bicycles under its bicycle code, and in general, we see really good use of our water roads, fire roads primarily, for cycling, and people abide by the rules and regulations that we've set out. We have regulations posted throughout the watershed to help guide this use, and we do see some impacts associated with bikes on the watershed as well. So there is a need to continue to enforce and regulate this activity. In 2015, Assembly Bill 1096 was signed by the government. This identified bicycles, identified e-bikes, class one and two, as bicycles. However, in this Assembly bill, it also noted that local jurisdictions have the authority to regulate and restrict bicycles and motorized bicycles on lands within their jurisdictions, in line with their missions and their goal for land management. So as a public agency, the district does have the right to regulate e-bikes in a way that may be different than what the 1096 does. Currently, the district's motor vehicle code identifies motorized bicycles as being prohibited, and says that no person shall operate a motorized bicycle on district's watershed lands. They are allowed on public roads and within parking lots. Our regulation signs currently have emblems clearly showing that e-bikes are not allowed on the district's watershed fire roads. The community advisory committee was developed because the district has seen an increase in the use of e-bikes on its watershed lands. There has been discussion around how to proceed with access relating to e-bikes. So in 2019, the district held a public workshop. After the public workshop, the Board of Directors decided in May of 2019 to authorize the formation of a community advisory committee. The district staff put out a request to the public to apply to the participants in the advisory committee. Of that applicant pool, we received, we invited 10 people to participate as CAC members. Since September of 2019, the CAC has been meeting monthly to review topics relating to e-bike access. Over that period, there's been seven meetings held, and the eighth meeting was planned for April, but was canceled due to COVID-19 restrictions relating to public gatherings. So as part of the CAC process, the district hired a facilitator from Sacramento State's Community and Consensus Program to help facilitate and oversee the whole process. They laid out a charter that was used to guide the CAC process, and that was introduced to the committee at their first meeting in September, as well as the goal and objective of the CAC for the eight-month period, which was to review a series of topics that were identified during the 2019 workshop relating to potential concerns regarding e-bike access on the district's watershed lands. At the October meeting, the district invited in an industry professional from Bosch Industries to review the current state of e-bike technology and get all the e-bike CAC members up to speed on what the current technology was. We also reviewed other jurisdictions' land management decisions and approaches to e-bike access. At the November meeting, we reviewed the district's roads and trails management plan, as well as the environmental setting, to give everyone an understanding of how the district currently maintains its infrastructure on the watershed. At the December meeting, we reviewed e-bikes in relation to other user groups. As part of this, we reviewed the 2013 watershed census survey to give everyone an idea of how the watershed lands are being used and what different recreational activities are currently occurring. And we also had a presentation from Trail Partners, which provide an overview of the Slow and Say Hello campaign, which has been a great campaign that's influenced user behavior through education and outreach. In January, we had a meeting and presented, we had a presentation from Fathom Engineering to review lithium ion battery devices and the risks that they impose. In the February meeting, we overviewed the district's enforcement data relating to bicycles and other activities on the watershed, and we also reviewed impacts that the district has seen on its watershed lands through bicycle activities. At the March meeting, we were, between the January and March meeting, the facilitator asked the CAC participants to start developing their own recommendations to help guide how we would move forward with e-bike access. The March meeting was probably the most fruitful meeting that we had, and there was a lot of good discussion regarding the recommendations that the CAC members had developed, and that's the bulk of what is the e-bike community advisory summary report, which is attached to the staff report. As I mentioned, the April 14th meeting was canceled. However, the CAC members all had an opportunity to review the summary report, provide comments, and the comments were integrated where appropriate, and then attached in the report as attachment A, so that everyone could review the thoughts that they had on the process. The e-bike CAC summary report is broken down into a number of sections. The background section really provides the context of the watershed lands, the rules and regulations that are used to guide how we manage the lands. The CAC introduction and overview really breaks down how the CAC members were chosen, the process that was developed to guide the CAC, as a roadmap, you can think of it, it outlined the schedule, and it also reviewed or presented a initial screening and interview process that all the CAC members what their vision currently was. The bulk of the report really is in the CAC summary, the summary of the CAC input. This really highlights and summarizes all the recommendations that were brought forward by different members, and provides a discussion and overview of what we heard from the community during the meetings on these different topics and these different recommendations that were brought forward. Important to note that not all the recommendations are necessarily new. These are things that we've heard from workshops before we convene the CAC, as well as through the process from the general public, but they were important to bring forward and have a discussion in a public setting, and we really are thankful for everyone's participation in that discussion. So the discussion, the final section is the discussion of potential CAC options for further refinement. This is really where there was alignment on a couple of core issues that came out of the recommendations, and we spent a little bit more time digging into those concepts with the group, because there was some alignment on those topics. So I'm going to spend a minute and go through some of the input that we received and the recommendations that we heard from the group. E-bike access was brought up continuously, and it was the core portion of this discussion, but there was not consensus on allowing e-bike access among the group. Two very polarized positions, some supporting it, some against it. There was a concept of limited access brought forward, allowing e-bikes on a limited number of fire roads. This is kind of the concept, major arteries through the watershed connecting different parts of the community. There is some support for this idea, but there were some concerns that enforcing it would be very difficult, some issues. Those opposed to e-bikes really didn't support this approach and saw it as a way of providing e-bike access on the watershed. There was acknowledgement that rentals have been an issue, e-bike rentals specifically within urban environments. Some cities have had issues with those, and there was acknowledgement that we could potentially see an increase in the use of e-bikes on the watershed lands from rentals, and some discussion about the need to potentially prohibit or ban rentals. There was acknowledgement that this would be very difficult to enforce, but there could be some outreach done to rental companies, signage put out there to try to kind of limit the number of rentals we're seeing on the watershed. There was some discussion of a registration program, really acknowledging that there's a local model of this. Marin, Tamara Ncho has a fee-for-service model. This was brought up in a number of occasions and discussed about how the district could move forward this kind of process to allow for limited access. There were some concerns from e-bike supporters that, you know, we were starting to treat e-bikes differently than bicycles, and there was some concern around that approach. There was a lot of discussion around trial period throughout the entire process. There were topics that the CAC members and general community wanted to hear about, but there's just not a lot of good data available on e-bikes within open space lands currently, and so there was a lot of discussion that a trial period might help the district capture some unique information relevant to our local watershed lands in regards to e-bike access and usage. But there were some concerns that this would be a costly process and might not result in any actionable data at the end of the day. This CAC summary, or the CAC report, does provide some discussion of the areas that we had alignment on, and those were really around education and enforcement. There's broad support for the idea of an educational campaign similar to Slow and Say Hello, really thinking about influencing user behavior through engaging users and actually educating others to have good trail etiquette and try to share the watershed as best they can. There was acknowledgement that we could increase signage and flyers at entry points and throughout MMWD's lands to really ensure that everyone understood the rules of the road, the trail etiquette that we're requesting people to use while they're out on the watershed. We do have signage out on the watershed, but there are areas on downhill routes, for example, that could be improved. There was some discussion around partnerships with other organizations. The concern, the idea was that for us to be successful in doing anything with e-bikes, that we need to be engaging some of those stakeholder groups, like industry professionals or local groups, like MCBC or local mountain biking groups, in this discussion and participation in the component of a program. There were some concerns that a robust education program would require additional resources that may be above and beyond what the district has capacity to support for a specific user. In regards to enforcement, there is a broad acknowledgement that we could enhance enforcement measures to better control users on the watershed, and that targeted enforcement would be a mechanism to allow us to address some of the bad actors that are on the watershed and having an impact. But that would, it was acknowledged that that is also broadening beyond just e-bikes into bicycles as well. There was an idea that came forward about, you know, having an agreement or some sort of commitment that e-bikes, bicyclists in general, and e-bikes make when they start to use the watershed, have a social control concept. There was acknowledgement that raising fines might be a way to penalize bad behavior and really control use in a better way. So that's in a very high-level summary of the CAC input and the summary report that's been developed based on the eight meetings, seven meetings that we had. Based on the input that we got from the CAC members and the public workshop that we held, staff has developed a number of approaches for the Board to discuss further. These are informed approaches that we think are feasible and that we might be able to bring forward. We envision having discussion here tonight and then refining these further and bringing forward for future discussion. But one of those is on the topic of watershed user education. An education campaign would aim to influence user behavior through raising awareness of watershed regulations. We could do this through enhancing our watershed signage specifically around downhill routes at major intersections and major entry points to ensure that everyone is aware of the rule implications that we have set forth. There was a concept about establishing a volunteer trail ambassador program. We actually currently have a watershed ambassador program where someone comes up and volunteers and sits in a kiosk and greets people as they come into the watershed and makes sure that they're oriented and understand the regulations. We thought we could expand this kind of program out onto the watershed and onto our roads and trails through making partnerships with existing stakeholder groups. Another idea was to expand the capacity for existing community partnerships and nonprofits that are working on trail etiquette campaigns and environmental education. So Slow and Say Hello were potentially the roving ranger that One Tam houses, you know, providing additional support to get more presence on the watershed to interact with our users and educate them. Some considerations around an education approach, more signs on the watershed are, could be a good thing, but there is a risk that they'll be ignored. As we put more signs out, there's also a risk that we create sign pollution on the watershed. A lot of people come out to our lands to be in nature and don't want to be influenced by overabundance of signs. The concept of trail ambassador program would require significant staff coordination and resources. This may require us to evaluate other programs and come up with trade-offs, because we are at capacity with some of our programs. An enhanced enforcement approach, this really would aim to influence users' behavior through citations and fines. Basically, assess our current approach of warnings, citations, and look at the fee structure that we've got established, and look and see if we need to make some adjustments to our district code to be more than enforcement-oriented. So currently, in regards to e-bikes, our approach is that we interact with an e-biker, we provide them education about our regulations. The second time, they're issued a warning. The third time, they'd be issued a citation potentially. And the idea here is that we would enhance that. Another way is to continue to conduct an annual review of our watershed and user violations. We currently do this, but the idea is that we can enhance our response to where we're within violations and focus resources to address some of the issues that we're seeing in a more meaningful way. If e-bike access was to be allowed, we could develop a strategic enforcement approach to ensure compliance with the regulations. The strategic enforcement approach would entail multiple steps and processes. It could include a dedicated ranger, as well as other implementation measures to really influence how users are behaving on the watershed in relation to bicycles and e-bikes. A consideration for this is that a stronger enforcement approach may have some community members concerned about what that looks like and how we interact with them. Increased staff would have a cost, and it really is hard to define what the metrics are just by putting more boots on the ground. E-bike prohibition, a ban on all types of e-bikes would aim to reaffirm the district's current codes, which prohibits motorized recreational devices on the district's watershed lands with the intent of protecting water quality and natural resources. We'd really revise the relevant district codes to further clarify that e-bikes and other forms of electric power-driven recreational devices are strictly prohibited on our watershed fire roads. An e-bike ban may be difficult to enforce. As technical, as technology advances, it is difficult at times from a long distance to discern a regular bike from an e-bike, but it could be done. An e-bike ban may not align with other neighboring land managers' policies relating to e-bike access in the future, and that could result in some members of the community unknowingly violating our regulations. But probably something that can be addressed through proper signage and outreach. So an e-bike conditional allowance approach is another option that we've been considering, which is basically aimed to establish recreational opportunities for diverse user groups while supporting the unique experiences that we know many members of our community enjoy. We would propose to revise the relevant district codes to allow for class one e-bikes to access the watershed. However, as a condition to this allowance, we would establish one or two days a week where there are no bicycle accesses, access is allowed on the watershed. And this restriction would ensure that other user groups have adequate time and space to enjoy the watershed without cyclists on it. Another approach to a conditional allowance could be to allow a limited, allow limited e-bike access on a limited number of fire roads. We'll work through an exercise and actually identify the most critical thoroughways or arteries through the watershed that connect our communities or different open space lands, and have a limited number of roads open to e-bikes. As part of this process, we could also revise codes to strictly prohibit and ban e-bike rentals on the different watershed lands. Considerations, you know, as we make changes to any existing uses, there's a period of learning that our users would have to go through. Some would not adapt as well as others. Limiting access to a designated number of fire roads would be difficult to enforce, and closing the watershed one to two days a week to an existing user group may bring up some concerns with the money. So an e-bike registration program is something that was floated, and like I mentioned, Marin Tamara Ncho is an example of this. It's a fee-for-service model that would allow e-bike access through a registration process. The district would develop a registration process and annual fee that would support the program. We'd also revise the district's code to say that anybody that does not have a registered e-bike could be cited and fined for accessing the watershed lands. If we had a registration program, we would try to prioritize excess funding beyond the administrative costs to enforcement and protection of natural resources. The thing to consider in regards to this approach is that it could potentially be very costly for a registration program to be sustainable. It would require significant administrative support and be challenging to enforce at times, as it is difficult to discern e-bikes from conventional bikes from a long-distance for rangers. A final approach could be e-bike open access. This approach would essentially treat classes of e-bikes as regular bicycles and allow those bikes to use our fire roads as regular bicycles do. E-bike access would be facilitated through revising the district's code to reflect the change. Some considerations, once we open up access, we don't know what the future beholds. We might see an increase in usage to a way that is not sustainable, and it will be difficult potentially to reverse this decision in the future, yet once established, users won't be willing to give it up as easily as we might need them to if we have increased use to a way that is not sustainable. So as I mentioned, this is really a discussion item tonight. So we've developed these six approaches based on the CAC process, as well as the input we received from the workshop and the public input received through both of those endeavors, as well as staff's research on what other jurisdictions are doing and what we think is sustainable on a district's watershed. We really have intended to provide a series of options for discussion. Some of these can be combined and further refined. Our intent tonight is to take direction and notes, and then further develop some of these approaches in a way that we think meets the district's mission and bring them back for further discussion. But we do acknowledge that under the COVID restrictions, it's hard to get public input, so we will be doing, finding ways to outreach- So we will be doing, finding ways to outreach and not allow for a community input on the different approaches that we bring back to future meetings. So with that, I'm going to hand it over for discussion and answer any questions that you might have on the topic.
Sean?
Yep.
Do we track incidents on the watershed aside from citations?
Yes, so like medical emergencies, we track those. We track warnings as well.
Okay, and how about complaints, conflict complaints, trail conflict complaints?
We do have data on trail conflict complaints. We don't receive all of the complaints, but the rangers do, when they get out there and interact, they do track the warnings that are associated with those complaints.
And also taking complaints from aggrieved hikers or, you know, the sort of the proponent of the complaint, do we track those incidents?
We don't always track in the same way that we do with our warnings and citations. We do respond to all of those complaints and concerns, but we haven't been tallying them all over the years.
Yeah, I think that might be helpful if we could track and locate some of these incidents and get that information out because it seems to me, from my experience riding up there on a regular bike, acoustic bike, most of the conflicts seem to occur at the lower elevations around Lagunitas and Phoenix and descending on Eldridge below Lakeview. I don't, I, I think the board should consider, or staff, I guess, also should consider expanding the slow and say hello to Phoenix. I, I don't really understand why that hasn't been done because it seems like it's such a major portal for folks coming in, especially folks that are just casual visitors that aren't really hiking up on the trails. It seems like Phoenix is really kind of the gateway for a lot of the public. And then, like I said, on Eldridge, descending on Eldridge below Lakeview seems to be also an area that is of concern and also going down Lakeview towards Lagunitas. The upper elevations, you know, the upper parts. It's been pretty rare. I've, I've seen conflicts and I've certainly seen e-bikes above Lakeview. And I've seen e-bikes every time I go into the watershed at this point. So it's, it's definitely a, a growing presence as far as just seeing them and it's, it's not unusual to see e-bikes anymore. It's just, you know, they're big sellers. They're big sellers. So I'll, I'll stop rattling off some of my observations, let some of the other folks weigh in.
This is Armando and there's a couple of things that come to mind in looking at the presentation and thank you, Sean, for your work on this. One of them is I'd be really curious as to how you, what the calculations were to come up with a $500 annual permit for a bike. And at some point I'd like to see that number, how you arrived at that number. But the other thing is that, you know, I've been hiking on Mount Tam since the late seventies and I was a ranger at Golden Gate. I was also a ranger at Point Reyes. And, you know, the use, overall use of trails on Mount Tam has increased. And I do have a concern about a lot of what I've read and I've listened, I've listened to folks and seen photographs and all of that. And just, and I've said this before, but a lot of it really is anecdotal. And I think that I would like to request that Matt, the person on staff who pursues grants, that he take a look at seeing if there's funding that would allow or offset the cost to understand the impacts of all the various uses on the mountain and what they really are because there really is no, not, I'm not aware of, you know, sort of a bona fide research effort that looks at something like Mount Tam, a coastal mountain and the variety of uses. And I think that as a district, getting something like that done could be really valuable is just baseline information because people, you know, folks raise concerns about impacts on water quality and all of these other things. And I've said, and as I've said before, there's a variety of users out there and I, I hike, I fish, I, and I, and I mount bike. And, and not, and I do think that probably the biggest impact on water quality is likely the fishermen because they walk around the shores of all these bodies of water. But anyway, I would like to see if there's a possibility for Matt to get funding that would underwrite that sort of work. And I think it would be really informing to many of the coastal public lands so it could be an opportunity to sort of lead the way there. You know, and I also, I may make some written comments on this and send them to you, Sean, because I think one of the things, for example, at Tamarancho, something that's not mentioned in these presentations is that Tamarancho, a lot of the enforcement is actually peer pressure. You know, if you ride in Tamarancho and you don't have a displayed permit, other cyclists will stop you and say, hey, you need to have a permit if you're riding out here. So that's one thing about sort of a, a program for people who are cycling on, on these lands and on lands in the area and also on water district lands. And then the other, and then I'll finish with this, and that is that the other thing that Tamarancho does is they have workdays and I've been to some of those workdays. They're well attended and so you have the users actually going out there and doing trail maintenance and all of that sort of work. So I think that there's, you know, in a way I'd like to see a combination of pluses and minuses and it's, I mean, this was a good presentation and you showed different options, but I do think that perhaps a spreadsheet with the sorts of things that we can see as benefits. But again, my primary concern is that we get good baseline information that tells us the reality of what, what sort of impacts are caused by different users. And I would also, and one last thing, and I really will stop at this, and that is that I see the need for additional public safety personnel on the water district is something going beyond bikes. There are a lot of users up there and, and a lot of the, you know, and a lot of the users, and again, I'm a hiker up there and there's just, I think we could use additional public safety folks out there and not just because of the e-bikes or even this question. I think we, we needed in terms of level of visitation that we're seeing, those stuff things.
Yeah, and I'll just comment on the dollar amount used in the presentation is not a proposal. It's just when you analyze the different, what would, to actually have a program, there's kind of, that would be the highest threshold, but it's really based on the number of users that would be registering for such a system that would control the cost at the end of the day.
Wouldn't, wouldn't the cost be based on, on the cost of the registration program?
Right, that's what we backed out of. So the registration program, what it would entail to administer as well as have enforcement elements, what that would cost and then.
What if we, what if we delegated registration to bike shops and, and places like that? That's what Tamarancho does. So if you want to get a day pass, you know, you can go to a bike shop and get a day pass or, you know, that, that's kind of where, what my thought would be on, on a registration program.
Yeah, that could be pursued if a registration program was the direction that the board wanted to go in.
On their registration program, do they actually issue something analogous to a license plate, something that goes on the, the bicycle, whether it be electric or, or otherwise, that identifies the vehicle itself?
They, for Tamarancho, they just, they give you a plastic tag that you hang on your handlebar, but I would think for something like e-bikes or bikes, you know, on our registration, especially on an e-bike, we would need to have the bike shop sign off that it's a Class 1A e-bike, right? How else, how else could we determine that? So, but the Tamarancho is a much less formal type of, it's really a fee, it's like an entrance fee that you're, you're paying and there's various sort of options. You can get a family pass, you can get what they call a gold pass. And so it's, it's a little bit different than I think what, what MMWD would, would be doing.
You can also get them online. Maybe there's a bunch of ways you can grab them.
Yeah, and I think we would, we would want a little more granularity, you know, in the registration, not excessive, but just we, we want, we would want to, you know, verify, you know, what type of, of bike it is. If that was a, a direction that was to be pursued. So could I just chime in a little further? I've, I've got a few other notes.
Yeah, please do.
You know, one of, this, the CAC process really, to some extent, I think became a forum for a community discussion about trail usage, trail conflicts in particular. And it did be, it does seem to have become somewhat polarized and I suppose maybe it has, maybe it has to be, we're kind of at that point where, you know, we're at kind of a decision point and, you know, so you've got camps that are kind of forming. But it, it seems to me, and I mean, I've been riding up there for years, that we do need to work on the culture and I think we could do much better. I think this trail ambassador idea is a really good idea. I don't know if the ambassadors would need to be law enforcement or enforcement officers. You know, maybe they could be volunteers, you know, people that have, you know, long experience up there. But I, I do think sort of creating an expectation of good behavior and good citizenship as the norm, like what Armando was talking about at Tamarancho. This, this is part of the community. If you want to be part of this community, you know, there's certain standards that you need to uphold to, to keep your privileges. So another thing I've thought of is requiring that we, that bikes have bells on them. I think trail conflicts are worsened when bikers shout at hikers or other people, you know, a warning. I think bikes should have bells on them so that, you know, you can sort of let people know that you're in the area without sort of being aggressive or say, talking loudly, which really upsets people, you know, understandably so. What else do I have here? I, I think we should clarify, you know, one of the things now is we're supposed to be social distancing on the watershed. I don't really know if that has really been happening. I, I think folks are trying. I think that's something we need to encourage when we're past the pandemic is people, you know, need to give each other space. So I think our current ordinance is five miles an hour when passing. Well, I, I don't know if that's adequate. Maybe it should be five miles an hour when you're within, you know, 10 feet of a pedestrian, something like that, that, you know, you, you slow down. So, you know, I think refining some of our, some of our ordinances, you know, improving the signage, I do think expanding the slow and say hello to include Phoenix and Lower Eldridge, improving, maybe having like a wallet size card that has the rules that people can take. That at one of the kiosks at Tamarancho, they have a map and some of the rules. So just some things to, you know, kind of let people know what's expected and to start creating that community and that culture of respect. And I've got to let my dog out of here, so I'll be right back.
I'm just going to chime in a little bit to agree with Larry on this. I, I'm up on the watershed in the hills very, very frequently. I'm, I'm a hiker, not a biker, but during this period, I've spent far more time than I generally do on the fire roads. That's not my usual place to be because we're all socially distancing and it's easier to maintain that space. And I have to say, I've seen the full range of behaviors. Some of the bikers that we've encountered have been great. They're practicing a slow and say hello and others are not yet, don't yet feel that they're in that community of culture that Larry described. And I don't know that anybody is passing it five miles an hour. I have to say, I haven't experienced that at all. But, but I, I very much endorse the idea of, of our working together to create that community and that sense of respect and responsibility. I can't say that I have in the past seen the level of, you know, use that we've been seeing over the last month or two since people are more on the, on the, on the fire roads. And I think it has been challenging. I think it's very challenging. I've seen far more older people out hiking or walking. You know, there aren't that many options and everybody needs to get outside. And I, I would like to say I've seen the level of accommodation that we all want, but I think we're not, we're not quite there yet. And I think that's fair for us all to acknowledge. But I, I think the, the, the presentation that Sean has done today is a, is a great start. I think there are a lot of excellent ideas here and to the extent that we can use this opportunity to build that culture that really has not, I think, I think it's fair to say has not yet come together and start to break down some of that antagonism and make everybody come to a new appreciation of the watershed as something that we share. I think, I think we have that opportunity now and, and I hope that we are able to move that forward constructively.
Well, thank you for that input. If no one else has discussion, then what it will do is we'll take this, these comments that we've received tonight, and I think we can hash out a number of the concepts that we, or approaches that we showed you tonight and bring back a whole series in a little bit more detail and refined in a number of ways and have a couple more strategies and really show the benefits and, and downsides to some of the different approaches. So with everything I heard tonight.
Meantime, I guess we're just going to stay status quo, obviously. So it's sort of in the gray zone, I guess.
Well, I, I think that one of the things, Sean, if you can incorporate into your plans here, is I think we need a plan of public outreach. I need, I think we need to scope what we're going to be doing over the next six, seven, eight months, whatever it takes, where we have adequate public engagement from all corners on this.
So with that, were there any other board comments? So we will, as Sean noted, take what we heard from the board as well as the comments that have come in and will continue to come in from the public through different means that we'll work on eliciting it. And we'll be coming back to another board meeting, having some more details around some of the concepts that we. um, having some more details around some of the concepts that we heard tonight and beyond. I did want to note that, um, we have approximately 30 comments for this item. And as I noted at the beginning of the meeting, all of the comments that came in prior to the meeting have been shared with the board and we'll be doing the same, excuse me, with all subsequent comments. And all these comments will be posted on our website.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll move on to item three, which is a report on current and proposed financial assistance for customers affected by the current shelter in place order. And, um, our finance director Chuck McBride will be giving us this item. You're good, Chuck. Oh.
Good evening, members of the board. I am Chuck McBride, the finance director for the district. Um, tonight we'll be talking to you about some, um, alternatives for providing customer assistance to our water users. We, uh, we're still monitoring the effects on the district financially from this event. Um, on May 28th, we will have a finance committee meeting. And, uh, at that time, we'll be presenting the board and the finance committee with, um, with the results of our, uh, April financials. And hopefully at that point, we'll start to get a, a, a good picture of, of how we are doing, um, in relation to our revenues, uh, uh, and the impairment of those by the COVID event. So just to begin with and walk through a few milestones for you, um, since this event began, on March 13th, the district suspended termination of water service. On March 17th, Marin County and five other counties ordered, uh, shelter in place. And then on March 19th, the district suspended late fee charges for our delinquent customers. And also on March 19th, California, uh, issued their statewide shelter in place order. And then on March 24th, the district suspended mailing of, of final notices to customers who were delinquent. So realizing that, um, that we do have water customers who are, who are feeling the effects of this event, um, we've, we've looked at a number of methods to help them and, and we'll talk about three of those here uh, and the recommendations that we have, uh, for the board. So the first consideration that we had was for extended payment plans. So the current state, um, we can't under Prop 218 forgive, uh, delinquent customers, but what we do do is offer them, uh, a payment plan. So if you're delinquent, uh, once every year, you can, you can, um, take, take advantage of this and you can spread out those delinquencies over a 12-month period. Um, that's a custom tailored thing. It's something that's done between the customer and one of our customer service representatives. And based on the amount of the delinquency and the customer's particular circumstances, uh, they tailor that to that customer. Um, what our proposed alternative is, is to provide all delinquent customers with a one-time 24-month, uh, payment term. Uh, what we envision right now is that that would be automated. So, uh, at some trigger event, likely when the shelter in place, uh, ends, uh, we would look at all delinquencies and we would automate those over that 24-month period. The, uh, it, it, it depends on how many delinquents we, we, we have based on what month it is. They range right now from, we had about 4,850 delinquencies in April. Uh, but then if we look back at January numbers, we have about 7,100 delinquencies. So part of that's based on the different pay cycles that pick up more customers in one than the other. Um, but you could use that as kind of, um, bookends of how many we would likely have, uh, if we use, use this program. Um, there would be no interest or late fees, uh, on this type of program. Um, there are some nominal but unknown, um, uh, revenue considerations from this. There, there could be some cash flow implications, although I think they would be relatively mild. Uh, there are some costs associated with this, uh, but again, they're, they're not large costs. We'd have to spend probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $20,000, uh, for automation of our system and, and, um, a little bit under 20 hours of staff time just to, uh, just to practically set this up, but, um, very doable. So the next thing that we considered as an alter, alternative was to extend the summer water tiers. So, um, right now, uh, current state, summer water tiers are effective on June 1st to November 30th. Uh, our proposal is to pull that back by a month. So make the summer tier extend to May 1st instead of June 1st. Um, and what that would do, uh, from the financial impact would be approximately $150,000. Uh, what, what it would mean to our customers, uh, just did a calculation on a customer who's using 26 CCF. So under the winter rates, that customer in May would have a bill, um, of $123. If we took that summer tier and moved it back to May, that same customer now would pay $108. So they'd save $15 or about 12% on their bill. Um, and that would extend on up into those, uh, up into the higher tiers also. And then finally, we looked at, um, a delayed rate increase. So we do have a scheduled rate increase of 4% that goes into effect on July 1st. Uh, our recommendation is to delay that increase to January 1st, 2021, a delay of six months. Um, that financial impact would be larger. Uh, we would forego approximately $2 million in revenue. Uh, we are working, uh, right now to look at options for that. Some of those that we put forth in the staff report would be that we would, uh, look at personnel solutions, which means that we might strategically choose vacant positions and leave those open for a number of months to, to garner those savings. Uh, we could also look at some, some smaller savings we could get from things like extending useful lives of vehicles and computers and maybe replacing things more slowly. Um, so the recommendations on all of this, uh, the first recommendation is to direct staff to implement the 24-month payment, payment plan. The second recommendation is to approve the resolution that would move the summer water rates to May 1st instead of June 1st. And then finally, to approve a resolution, uh, delaying the July 20, uh, 20 rate increase, uh, to January, uh, 2021. And that is my report. And at this point, we'll take questions or comments.
Oh, well, maybe just to jump in, I do want to thank you, Chuck. I think that's very thorough and I think, um, those are the kinds of things we need to be doing. Um, you know, we don't need to belabor the economic downturn, um, that people are experiencing. So I, I think, I think it's a very prudent, very reasonable course. Um, I think one question I have about the financial impact is, are you looking at delaying? And this might've been in the staff report and I may have missed it, um, but are you looking at delaying some of our, um, capital projects so that we have a little bit more flexibility on the, um, with the Pago funds that would otherwise have gone in that direction?
Yeah, that, that is something that we would absolutely consider and that was not in the staff report, but that would be something that we'd take into consideration.
Um, the reason I ask that in particular is because I do worry about, um, pulling back on, um, filling positions that we need, right? I mean, we need to, I mean, we, we need to, obviously, we want to make accommodations for our, for our constituents and our customers that are going through a very challenging time right now. And I'm delighted to, there are so many, um, water utilities around California, even before the moratorium orders that are taking it upon themselves to, um, avoid shut offs. It's what we all need to be doing as a community, of course. Um, at the same time, this is an essential service and we need to be providing that service, um, at the highest level that we can. You know, people need to feel that we are still providing, um, you know, safe, reliable, um, healthy water. So, um, I'm a little, I'd be a little reluctant to see us cutting back on operations, um, particularly at that $2 million level. You're really starting to, to cut in pretty significantly there. So I'd like to see some options for how we're going to. Uh, so let me be clear, I'm, I'm in favor of all of these, of all of these recommendations. Um, in terms of how we take, move on from that and how we address the financial, um, uh, impact of that for the district. Um, I would, I'd like to see a little bit more detail on, on what that would mean on the operations versus capital side.
I'm under the impression that, uh, our non-time sensitive, uh, bigger projects have been, been, uh, slowed down, perhaps even in some cases totally postponed. Am I right about that?
Yeah, yes, uh, Director Gibson, you, you're definitely correct about that. Um, we have been following, um, the orders from the state and county. And we've been thoughtful on the capital projects that we're moving forward in terms of, as you know, their time sensitivity and criticality. Um, the most recent order did open up construction projects. So we are, um, moving forward now with a couple of the ones we put on pause and going forward. Um, but what we, we did accrue some, um, I wouldn't say savings per se, but some available funds. Um, but it is, I, I think it, it does make sense for staff to take a hard look, which we'll be doing. For example, of course, our normal, we don't do much traveling, but, um, some limited conference attendance that we, um, typically do this time of year, of course, didn't occur because of the virus. So there are some carryover dollars that I believe we'll be able to find, um, as well as, and apply to that.
We also, um, gained a little bit when we refinanced our, um, bond debt. So I don't know if that was included in the original calculation of the biannual budget that we did back in, uh, 2018, 2019.
Yeah, you, you may recall Director Bragman on that. Um, no, that wasn't budgeted. The, um, savings, the reduction in the debt payments actually began, I believe it's July 2022 is when we'll start to realize this.
Okay. Um, just to go on a slight, uh, slight, uh, detour on the bond, um, financing, of course, uh, we couldn't have anticipated what would happen. But bond rates, I think, have, have been almost cut in half uh, in the last six months. Um, and I don't know whether there's any possibility of refinancing any of our other debt that's outstanding to take advantage of that situation, but that might be worth looking into. And, uh, I, I just second, uh, Director Kohler's comments. Uh, you know, really it's, it, it's really imperative for us to reflect, uh, what's happening out there with the economy. And also, um, as Krishna reminded, uh, us, we are really the backbone of public health. And folks need to know that, you know, they should not, they need to be following those hygiene recommendations, CDC and by Matt Willard, right here in Marin. They will help stop the virus and we really need to send that signal out there as an agency and as a board, uh, that we take those seriously and we want folks to, to follow those guidelines. So, uh, I'm really pleased, uh, with the direction, uh, that you've outlined. I support the direction, um, and I'm, I'm proud of, of the direction because it's really a reflection of our status as a municipal, as a public utility. So, um, it's, um, it's a good thing and it's, it's the right thing to do.
Are there any other questions or comments from board members?
You know, I'd just like to say thanks as well to you, Chuck, for the presentation and I also support all three recommendations.
Um, I was going to move approval. Do you need these to be done separately?
I, I did want to, um, yes, but I'd need to move to check on our public comments.
No, I know, I was just gonna, all right, I can, I can wait till the, fine.
We do have one public comment, uh, from the Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers Board of Directors. The Coalition of Sensible Taxpayers urges the Marin Municipal Water District Board to approve resolution numbers 8568 and 8569 at its May 5th, 2020 meeting. In the spirit of shared sacrifice, we commend the district staff for its proposal to begin assessing its lower summer water rates as of May 1st, a month earlier than normal, and its proposal to defer for as much as six months the otherwise July 1st, 2020 scheduled rate increases, which are indicated to raise rates by 4%. Because so much of the district's billing rates are now independent of customers' usage, a conservation-minded customer can hardly avoid the July 1st rate increases by correspondingly reducing water usage. Consequently, deferring the July rate increase in particular avoids some billing shock at a time when many taxpayers are struggling financially. We urge yes votes on both resolutions. And that is all we have for public comment.
So I'm going to move approval of both resolutions unless you need them to be voted on separately.
Sure.
I'll say.
Oh, we can do both, okay. A second, did I hear?
Yep.
Oh, good.
Thank you. Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Kohler?
Aye.
Director Quintero?
Aye.
Director Russell?
Aye.
President Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, um, we'll move on to item four. I did want to thank the board on item three for the direction you gave staff in bringing these items to you tonight. On item four, um, this is communications during COVID, an update of all the efforts our Jeannie and our communications team has been doing. So with that, I'll turn over to Jeannie here.
Thank you. Let me get my screen up here. Okay, are we all good?
Yep.
Okay, great. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to talk about some of our communications during the pandemic. So obviously this is a high priority for us. Um, effective communication is really one of the things that we are focusing on throughout the pandemic. So for us, communications began early, early on, prior to the first shelter in place order. And just like, um, typical crisis communications, our messaging expands and evolves as conditions change. So initial messaging regarding safety and the reliability of water, of course, was first and foremost. And then our messaging expanded to include things like office closures, the watershed issues that emerged. And of course, now, um, discount programs, assurances of no shut offs, no late fees. So as time went on, we were careful to really take a look at conditions on the ground and decide how we could really improve on our messaging. So I wanted to walk through some of those messages and some of those platforms with you. So again, Marin water is safe and reliable and this is really such an important message during this pandemic. Um, if you think back to the early stages with all the uncertainty, we really wanted to make sure that people understand that the water is safe, that the experts agree. And this is one of the messages that we try to reinforce on a regular basis. The fact that our tap water goes through more rigorous health and safety standards. I think you read many of these points in the op-ed that, um, we published in the IJ. So another chief of course is that we understand water is essential and we're on the job to make sure that people's water continues to flow. So that includes our field crews and making sure the public understands that they're there 24/7, um, to take care of emergencies. And when our offices closed, we really wanted to make sure that people understood that while our offices were closed, you could still reach us, whether that's through mail, email, phone or online. Another important component of this message is really letting the public know that we care about our staff as well and we were taking the proper safety protocols. So, I don't know if you can see it, because on my screen it comes up a little different. But here's an example of a, a post that just simply shows our crews on the job, practicing social distancing and all of those things. So another, we're in here together, we're together. So another key, we're in here together, we're together, and we are here to help. So we know that times are uncertain, and people are having some economic problems and difficulties. So we really wanted to make sure that they understood that no shut-offs would occur, no late fees, and to provide resources for them if they had questions or wanted to reach out to us. And here you can see all of that messaging. I don't know if you can see it here in the corner. This is actually a Nextdoor post, and you can see it has 10,665 impressions, meaning that message was able to be seen by that many people. Another key message is something we talked about earlier in the evening, and that's the fact that the watershed is open, and it provides such an important respite for our community. But it's also open with some key restrictions that we wanted to make sure we're clearly communicated. A health order, for example, prohibits vehicles on the watershed. And the only exception to that really are those that have a disability placard or the proper license plates. And also, the really basic messages, and we continue to work on this one, to make sure people get the message, don't visit the watershed if you're sick, and contain social distancing. And there's an example of what some of that messaging looks like. This one actually got a lot of traction. I think it was 33,000 impressions there. There's a lot of interest in the watershed. So another message that we are really trying to get out there is that we have resources to share. Distance learning programs through our conservation department and through our school programs are now made public to everybody. So you can download our materials from our website, and you can use the videos to basically share the same programs that we would normally share in a school environment. And with our volunteer programs suspended, we really wanted to find ways to get the board out, to share some of the great work that the folks on the watershed, including Suzanne, were doing with virtual ways to stay connected, like the City Nature Challenge. So here's just a quick look at our website. You can see the Waterbeat Book, which you can download, and access to our video program. So this is something that Carrie and her team really worked on with our contractor, to make sure that we could sponsor this for everybody who really wanted to use it. A little bit about our platforms. So the website continues to be an important tool for us. And during the pandemic, we created a dedicated landing page for our COVID-19 updates, responses, and all the information sort of aggregated in one place. We had a strong presence on the homepage. We kept that alert bar going, just to reinforce some really important messages about safety or anything that would come up along the way. So the content that is COVID-related had about 3,500 unique hits so far. And there's just an example of what that homepage looks like. So a little bit about our social media presence. We've really been working hard to build up that platform, to have a real direct way to engage with our community and our customers. So for Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and Nextdoor, since we started messaging about the pandemic, we've had more than 80 posts and about 25 Instagram stories, which are just separate temporary posts. And all told together over the past two months, from early March to, to early May, we've reached more than 235,000 people, either with impressions or individual audiences. So what I wanted to show you here is just an example of some of our social media messaging. So with everything going on in the webs, on the watershed, we really wanted to reinforce some of the rules. So we decided to do it through an animated GIF here. So I'll just see if it comes. It's just one to illustrate the message, just to make sure that everybody understands that there are some really important health restrictions in place. So a little bit of forms, of course, we use our customer newsletter, and that reaches 50,000 of our customers. A news release, and you all probably read the op-ed that was sent by Ben, and we use that on several of our platforms. We also use advertising to expand our reach. I don't know if you saw our ad in the Friday IJ. If you missed it, it will be running again this weekend to capture that weekend audience. And here's an example of what it looks like. And it's really, again, reinforcing two of our really key messages. The water is safe and reliable, and we're in this together. And then a look at our upcoming customer newsletter. You can see, again, the safety message, and the important message down here about how we want to help with your bill if you're having a hard time. I'll flip to the back. And again, more money with our rebate program. We have several new rebates kicking off on the 15th of May, so you're going to see a lot more messaging around that as a way to save money, especially with the updated order, health order here. And just a little bit on our e-newsletters. That gives us the ability to reach about just under 5,000 people. It's a way for us to provide electronic updates on things that are happening either on the watershed or with the district. And for us, this was an opportunity to engage with our volunteers. Because the programs were suspended, we wanted to offer different ways for them to stay connected with the watershed through some of these virtual programs that you see here. And just a little bit about coordination and collaboration, which is really important during a crisis like this. So our staff coordinates with Marin Public Information Officers throughout the county. It's just a way for us to make sure we are getting the most up-to-date information that informs our messaging. And we also work with communication teams regularly and meet with them from the Bay Area water agencies. And that's another good resource for us all to be sharing, some of the things, the issues we're seeing, what's happening in our different areas. In addition to that, we also communicate regularly through meetings with communications officers from Bay Area parks and preservation groups. And that's also really helpful, because we are all sort of dealing with the same issue in terms of the amount of crowds that we're seeing on the watershed and in some of our parks. And in addition to that, of course, we, we help with signage, anything for our offices, and just try to communicate as an agency. And that's especially important for customer service. So for example, when we have an ad that's running, we'll make sure to reach out to our customer service team, so they know they might expect a spike in calls, provide any talking points, just really work closely together, so we have a unified message across the board. And finally, a little bit about conservation. With the new order on Monday, people are now able to have landscaping work done at their homes. So we've been working with our conservation team to get the message out that these new rebates will be beginning in the middle of May. If you're looking at water-efficient landscaping, if you're looking at some lawn improvements, that now's the time to start planning that, and we're here to help. It is not only a great way for customers to benefit from the savings, but it will also help us reduce demand as we move into the summer. Okay, so that's a quick look. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Outstanding.
Yeah, I really want to thank you, Jeannie. It's, it's so important to be communicating during a moment like this. So I, I'm just going to say thank you for all the work that you and your team, and of course, the conservation team are doing as well. It's terrific.
Yeah, it's, we really have a great team.
You really do. Hey, one quick question, and you may not know the answer to this. On the irrigation controllers, is that just, is it, is it any irrigation controller? Are you featuring the Rachios, or, or, you know, what are, what are the parameters on that?
I don't know what specific controllers they're using. This is the new program that came before the board that kept up for.
Yeah, so we're just helping. But, but really, great work on this, and it's really impression, impressive, the number of people you're reaching with it. So congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Could I just make one suggestion on the COVID page? I think we should have a link to the county health page. I think, you know, that would be helpful for people to get to that quickly.
Yeah, will do. That's an excellent suggestion. And I think the county just launched a website today on recovery. So we've been trying to push that out on social media. So maybe that's also a good link to add to that COVID page.
Thanks.
Will do.
Also, actually, I want to acknowledge something that you didn't mention, Jeannie, and that is that while we've been having this meeting at the bottom of the screen, all of the conversation's actually being typed out, or when we had the, when we had the slide sets presented, so it was accessible.
I did see it on watershed. Did you see it on all the presentation decks?
I thought it was on the other presentation decks, but that's just a great, that's a great and appropriate move.
Great.
Is that coming from CMCN?
No, I think it's coming through the Zoom closed caption feature.
Pretty good.
Yeah.
Are there, are there any other board comments or questions on this item?
I said great at the beginning, and also say that this is very exciting to see the level of messaging that you're getting out there, Jeannie, on behalf of the community and the district. It's really, it's a great job, I think.
Thank you so much.
Just everybody smiling, really big, big smiles on the screen.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this item?
We have one public comment from Larry Minikas. There needs to be a significant step up on the importance of social distancing when outdoors in the watershed specifically. Compliance is falling far short of idea, especially leaning to and around Phoenix Lake. Many are not acting reasonably. It can be quite stressful at times for those of us who are acting responsibly and covering our faces when passing others. And that is all we have.
You know, that brings up something for me that I want to mention, and that is, I think we should use the phrase "physical distancing," because what we're actually experiencing is physical distancing, distancing and social engagement. I mean, I think we're all experiencing that. And, because we, anyway, I'm changing that language into my world.
How about just "safe distance"?
Physical distance is the, yeah, eeny meeny.
Yeah, no, I'm with you. I think that's a good, a good observation.
Will do.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item five, which is turned in, is turning into a routine item, hopefully not for too much longer. Continuation of the emergency contracting provisions in response to the COVID-19 public health crisis. So it's the resolution continuing the invocation of the district's emergency contracting provisions and authorizing the general manager to execute necessary contracts without advertisement to ensure continued district operations during the COVID-19 public health crisis. And I do not have information to provide to the board in terms of any contracts that we move forward under this declaration subsequent to the last board meeting. So are there any comments or questions from the board before I move to public comments?
Ben, does that mean you haven't used it?
The, the only time was when we had brought this the first time, and that was getting a backup contract in place in the event that we would need it due to some sort of outbreak that fortunately we have not seen in the workplace.
Okay. And you'll let us know if, if you actually have to invoke it?
If, right, I, I will, my plan is, if it works for the board, that every board meeting will be bringing this item, and I would chair and report out to the board if there were any contracts that were exercised under this delegated, this emergency authority.
Thanks a lot.
Public com, so there's no public comments, so with that, I would take a motion.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Kohler?
Aye.
Director Quintero?
Aye.
Director Russell?
Aye.
President Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, with that, our final item, item six, future meeting schedule and agenda items. Our board meetings and committee meetings are continuing as scheduled, and generally the same way as we've been doing it over the last month or two. Are there any particular comments from the board under this item?
Ben, are we going to have a watershed meeting on, I think it's set for June 18?
Yes, all our meetings that are calendared, we're planning to proceed with, including that one. Director Bragman?
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I'll conclude this meeting. Have a nice evening and stay safe.
Could I, before we, we go, I actually asked Jack if we could adjourn the meeting?
Oh, right.
In memory of Dan Hennessy, who was a longtime Fairfax resident who actually suffered fatal injuries in the watershed last week.
Oh.
58 years old.
My understanding was that it was a heart attack.
I don't think we know exactly where, but.
I'm sorry, but I mean, I didn't mean to interrupt the dedication, but.
His, his wife posted a comment, he died doing what he loved and with people that he loved, and that was riding his bike on Mount Tam. So Dan Hennessy.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you all.
Be safe, everybody.
Thanks.
Thank you.